Did everybody get signed in by the door? Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
A motion on the table by trustee Manor to approve the agenda as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been segmented by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting government body, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
Have a motion by trustee Manor to accept minutes as, or to approve the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The announcements discussion. We have an announcement. Library board member. If anybody is interested in being a library board member, or... Okay, I'm gonna read it one at a time. Please send a letter of interest to either me or to our clerk, Barbara, for serving a two-year term. And we need one, one member is still needed to serve. Now, the second thing is the planning and zoning members. We still need, uh, members on there, so please send a letter of interest to either me or to the clerk for serving.
Can I ask questions with it?
You need to read it. Sorry.
Read exactly?
Yes.
Okay.
It's to the planning and zoning members that are already currently on the planning and zoning.
Oh, I was getting to that in a second. But we still need one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Planning and zoning, I actually need a letter of interest, even if you're on it right now. But if you're not on it right now and you'd like to be, I need a letter of interest. But all... He was turning it off. Anybody on planning and zoning or interested in being in planning and zoning, please send a letter of interest to me or Barbara. We're going to be making appointments in December for service following the municipal elections. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my question, we've got something, we're inconsistent in because we've now gone on the state election cycle.
Right.
When our election in November, historically, that, those new elected officials would serve in that November meeting. Now, we're not gonna serve until January. Alright, we had always done reappointments of our board members with the new administration. So, my memory, it was always when we had a mayor's election, each mayor got to see, say who he was gonna work with or he wasn't. When I rewrite this on planning and zoning, it, because our language is still says, uh, planning and zoning should be nominated by the mayor, approved by the board trustees at the first regular meeting following a regular municipal election. That means in November, we're gonna nominate board members, or you're gonna nominate who you want on your planning and zoning commission. We'll approve them, but the newly elected officials won't be in office until January. So, you've got your outgoing trustees approving the incoming, uh, planning and zoning. I, I think this is all of ours. So, what it looks like to me is we probably need a rewrite of this language to get it in sync with the new state election schedule. That was its intent in all the elections I've been in here, is that the, uh, each administration either re-nominated or its own board members or less than ten years old, or else that's gonna change years. So, so that, when I read this, I said, well, it's pretty clear, next regular municipal election, that's what we're saying.
Right, and unfortunately, all of them are up, they, they serve a two-year, um, sentence?
Yeah, term, it, it, yeah, for whatever they did wrong.
And unfortunately, they're all up for renewal at this point.
Yeah, but, but I would think that, uh, if you're gonna have, uh, technically, you're gonna have a new board of trustees in January, that would be who you would want to approve your new PMG members. So, I don't know if we can, if we can push this till then, or if...
The way the ordinance reads, right now, we have to do it in December, correct? So, I think that's something we probably need to put on the schedule to get changed.
Yeah.
Right now, we know for a fact that we will have one new member on the board next year out of the five of us. And that is the only difference, it'll be on the board.
Yes.
So, I don't see there would cause a whole lot of change enough to create special meetings to redo the ordinance right now.
Yeah, and I think as long as we note it and put it on the...
Yes, I think we should, I, I appreciate you pulling it up. We do need to definitely put that up there.
It's one that just, we just became incompatible with something we intended to be compatible with.
Right.
So, change is good.
For the next, not this one.
So, it would be...
For the next election.
It would roll into two years from now, but if we start it now...
But we'd wanna get our language to be, just all it has to do is just be compatible with state election law, with the law. You know, and then, and as they change it, we change all that, instead of trying to constantly remember to do this.
Hopefully, they won't change it again for...
I don't know. Better than this.
That was a disaster. Okay?
So, thank you.
Yes. So, back to planning and zoning, 'cause I see a lot of people who wanna volunteer out there. I do, I do need letters of interest from existing planning and zoning, if you wanna stay on it, and anybody in the public who would like to be on it. And I don't need ones for existing library, correct, at this time, Barbara? Just for the new library?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems not all of our boards?
They're not all on the same schedule.
No, they're not all on the same schedule.
That way, you can mount from board to board and see which way you've been in the best. Okay? Uh, next is the mayor's report. I would like to report Tim Baggerly. Is Tim here?
No, he's not, I'm sorry, he's actually in California. Um, he could send you an email that I printed out for you?
I believe you put it in the packet, too.
To, no.
Uh, Tim Baggerly has been appointed to serve on the library board. He is a member of the community and has three young boys who utilize the library currently. He looks forward to bringing ideas and programs to the board. Uh, he did send a letter to Ms. Garcia today. Do you mind if I read this? Good afternoon, Ms. Garcia. Please convey my appreciation and thanks to the mayor and members of the council, the village team, especially Lisa Mountain Butcher, last name?
Well, Jack.
For the vote of confidence with regards to my appointment to the library board at tonight's meeting. I look forward to bringing what I have to the table and being part of what makes Koff Koff family, a family-driven community. That's regards, Tim Baggerly. I have not met the gentleman. He had a very nice letter to me of interest, and then I had a very nice letter from Lisa Rattan. So, we're zooming in and went forward with the appointment.
It's my understanding there are pretty frequent flyers at the library, too.
Yes. What it sounds like. Okay? And I don't think I have anything else on the mayor's report right now. Uh, next is the reports. Do we have skeet kopp up here? No, you're not.
How are we gonna be here?
Okay.
The, the trailer house has been demolished. I did send the pictures of the demolition to the tax assessor, um, so she is taking that, removing that off of our tax bill. But at least that's on.
Yes, and everybody saw what they want to do, correct? Did you get a chance to look at that one? They want to put a little portable building down by the tubing run. Of course, it's portable, they keep moving in and out.
So, you need to see, you need to see it?
They are looking at adding some lighting. Most of it is for skiing and tubing. It looks like a little bit of it is for security. Yeah, looks like they're going through, uh, Richard Medina to add that lighting. So...
They bought the lights from Richard, is he gonna do the work?
I'm sure he will. He's, he's the one who did the last lighting project with them. He's got a good, good relationship with them, so... And he knows a lot about lighting. Okay?
Well, I thought the most exciting report in this batch is the wells and what they're doing, just tell them.
The wells are looking good.
Is everybody okay with skeet kopp?
Everybody good with skeet kopp?
Yes.
Me approving the lights and...
I appreciate it, though.
Do you need a vote?
No, I just...
But we'll have one vote to approve the reports at the end, unless we wanna signal something out. Water, there's skeet kopp up. You just missed your turn.
Darn.
Dang it. Uh, Jubal?
Yes?
Do you wanna elaborate on anything on the water, or are we good with the reports that we got? Anybody have more questions for Jubal?
So far, we had the Mac Tech Mountain Pacific come out and check the well meters last Friday, or Thursday, and they all checked out one hundred percent. So, they've been checked, the wells, we're turning them on and off periodically. Your, our springs are about eighty-five, ninety gallons a liter at the end.
Wow.
So, we've come up quite a bit, so...
That's great.
And we did have one water main break on Sugar Pine last Friday, so that kind of put it down a little bit, but we recuperated, so we're doing all that.
Okay, on that water main break, how much of that water is accounting for, both in the leak and then the flushing of the line?
The flushing of the lines, we've had, Tony's gonna do some calculations today, and tomorrow, he's gonna get a, a round figure through the weekend. And kind of calculate, see how many gallons we've lost through that process.
And that'll, that should cover both, the flushing and the, and the leak?
Yes.
Okay. It was really interesting watching y'all work on that one. Sorry I didn't get through the mud with you.
I lived in that area and that affected my house, and I was just amazed how fast you got it corrected. I mean, try, maybe, maybe two hours or something, it wasn't any time at all. You did a great job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anything else on any reports?
I noticed that you were, now, writing a daily report, so is that requested?
On the water, or in general?
That, if you can make it.
Uh, I asked all, all the supervisors in the village to give me a weekly report of what everybody is doing. And so, that's where that's coming from.
Okay, just curious.
So, he's just, he's sharing it more than just to me, which I'm fine with.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I'm gonna go back to the ski area report, or the scary report, because Michael is here. Yo, Ken, go ahead with the lights and the perp, and the temporary building perp.
Thank you, guys.
Just no selling pot, are you?
Not yet.
I don't know what the rules are yet, no. Just no. Okay. Any other report question, I think Barbara wants to give a report, do you mind?
Uh, I just kinda wanted to let you know that I created this, um, it's the long legal sheet that you have. Just so that you would, I mean, you normally see the treasures are put in the back and have a recap, which are any funds, what we, um, are standing at revenues today, things like that. What I did was I added on the columns of what we had budgeted in for revenue, which, again, that's pretty much your, your, your guesstimating, so it's not a given that you're gonna actually get one point three-nine in general fund in revenues, but we usually come pretty close. I put in the expenditures, and then I also put in a line item for encumbered funds, um, because we have a tendency to forget that we have all these projects, especially right now, with all the projects that we have going on, that we've allocated eighty thousand for this, twenty thousand for that. Oh, let's go ahead and, and go through Mexican Alley, all the way through Borough, uh, that's another twenty thousand, those things start adding up. So, you need to kind of see what the true cash balance is gonna be, and not, if you're just looking at that recap that Sheila and I give you every month, it says, like, if you take the first line general fund, it'll say seven fifty-three is your cash balance in the period. If I take out those encumbered funds that I'm gonna be spending, I have to spend those funds. That hundred and sixty-five thousand you have allocated to go elsewhere. So, you're really looking at six twenty-eight, I need you to see a real, a real picture of what that fund is standing at. And if you'll look at, uh, drop down to sanitation environment, which is five oh three, that really kind of explains it to you. Right now, the revenues to date are fifty thousand dollars. We don't do any transfers out of there. Expenditures to date are seventy-two thousand dollars. We ended the month with thirty-five thousand dollars in there. We're budgeted to receive in two hundred and twenty-one thousand, that's for trash collection, okay? And tax on the trash. Our budgeted expenditures that were approved were two hundred and fifty-six thousand, so we're going to go over what we have in revenue. We don't have any encumbered funds, so I'm not taking any funds from sanitation environment. If we do exactly what we said we're gonna do, we're gonna have four hundred and fifty-two dollars in that fund at the end of the year.
That's at the end of the...
That's at the end of the year.
The fiscal year.
Right now, there's thirty-five thousand sitting in there. We're budgeted to bring in two hundred and twenty-one. If we bring in that two hundred and twenty-one, but we expend everything that we say we're gonna expend, two hundred and fifty-six.
And isn't that because of the increase in the garbage collection from Sloughville?
No, um, what it is, is I went, I, I went back and I looked. This is one of the ones where, remember when we talked about sled hauling? When we talked about how we did eighty thousand dollars? So, apparently sometime back in twenty fifteen, I guess this fund had built up quite a bit of reserves. And back in twenty fifteen, uh, they made the decision to start paying the sled hauling out of it. It used to be paid prior to that, out of the water fund. Plus, we just got through paying out twenty-five thousand dollars to the P E R for STAMTEC out of that. So, at this point, if we do one more sled haul, maybe two, we're gonna be zeroing out that fund and only bringing in about thirty thousand dollars a year. So, we'll have to go back to taking it out of water for sludge. So, this is where I'm strongly saying, if, uh, sled haul press, sled press.
To me, as, these, these get us better and better as we understand our, I, if we're gonna take some money out of water department to supplement sanitation environment, I think we need to do that, we need to show that's what we're doing, instead of just moving and show why. And then, that would help with the budget review, where if we say, look, we've out, we've pushed these reoccurring expenses over into this item, but we've gotta push the means to pay it also.
Right, and that, that's one of the things that, that Sheila and I are trying to do as we, um, especially with municipal streets. We're doing all of these projects and we're, we're gonna pay them out of municipal streets, then that cash match that we're doing for that project also needs to be there, and named swallow cash match, so that you can see it all in one thing, um, and you can go back and you can see the history, 'cause it took us a while to figure out, and like, if, if this fund is only bringing in thirty thousand dollars a year, how do we manage to keep paying sludge?
And then, it's good to, if we're earning this money through our water bills, but we're spending it on things...
The utility bill.
Yeah, then it, it's good to show all the property owners, we, we charged you at your water meter, or your sewer tap, or whatever it is we're calling it, but this is really where the money went. And in years past, it's gotten very hard to sort through as to what is water cost us. It, it pays for so many things. So, try to get this separated now, it's worth your time, Barbara, I appreciate it.
This is, I really liked the way this is written. Okay, clears our ears.
I don't know if I understand, but I can...
Well, and we could definitely go over, if you wanna give me a call, we can go over it, 'cause I can look at some of the examples.
No, it's, it's, it's a schedule, right?
It's probably gonna become a lot clearer when we go through the resolution.
Alright, anything else on reports? We are moving right along now. I will call for a motion to approve reports.
Make a motion to approve reports.
Have a motion on the table by trustee Manor, do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second by trustee Mitchell, any further discussion?
Is this, oh, this report that Barbara just talked about, is this gonna be a monthly report?
Yes, sir, I will update it monthly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Once it's created, it's a matter of, the creating, everything...
Next, next month, after we do, after we do the budget resolution, you're gonna see a lot of those funds that say encumbered, they're gonna sweep over into the budget, budgeted expenditures, and then you're gonna go, why, if we have two hundred thousand in revenue, do we have X amount budgeted? And that's, we're gonna track it, I'm gonna keep it so that I can go, did you remember when you told me I needed to transfer another twenty thousand dollars to the senior center? That's what we do it.
Thank you.
We'll try and keep track of them.
But in the past, we showed that we had expended our, our grant money on the project, but we didn't, we weren't tracking the matching or any overage that we had to throw in.
Correct.
And so, at the end of the year, it showed we just paid our grant, hey, great, we're on the budget, whether we were or not.
But everything else came from somewhere else.
It came from somewhere.
So, okay, any further discussion?
Chief, I noticed on the reports that you have two thousand dollars for ammunition, how long does that last you?
Uh, that's about one year's call.
Okay.
What's our turn, let's reiterate?
I did have one question. Okay. Uh, Kevin, is there an update on that one thirteen swallow?
They're out of there, they've been staying sometimes at night in another location. However, the property manager has now evicted them from there. So, as far as we know, they're out of town right now.
One thirteen swallow has cleaned up a lot on the outside.
And we need to say a big thanks to the neighbors around there, they're the ones that primarily cleaned up the front of the house and the street on their own. They just went down when they moved out and cleaned up the front of it.
Yeah, that's good to, to be good.
Kind of neighborhood project there combined with the village, and it, at least that one worked out.
Alright, any other discussion over the reports? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. The adoption of ordinance three nine four in ordinance regulating cannabis and cannabis establishments in accordance with the Cannabis Regulation Act, adopting a new title, three, chapter eight by title and general subject matter. So, this was rewritten and cleaned up the way we asked Jeff to do.
I'm ready to, I have two comments on, on signage. I think we could just delete the signage language in this ordinance, because if we have been by the state, we have to treat this business like any other business, so it's already controlled by our signage ordinance.
But when I've read some of these regulations from other villages, our states, they've always had that in there for some reason. I don't know why.
Well, and see, and we need to know why if we're gonna have it in ours. That, that was my question, if, uh, like, does it, does it add to the value of the ordinance? How is it, how is, why do we put signage in here, and don't put setbacks, or don't put height of buildings? All those other things are by zone. If you go to an activity, or your property's in any certain zone, the first thing you do is go to that zone in our group and say, what's allowed there, and what, how am I controlled, signage, parking, occupancy, everything else is already in, it's in the zone. That's why when we, when we work through this, we try to reference what zones different activities we're gonna be allowed in. We have to allow it by the state, but to me, the shorter an ordinance is, the easier it is to follow. And, and if we have signage in here, and then, uh, and then we didn't put other items, are people gonna say, well, all you addressed was signage in your ordinance, so everything else is allowed? I know the answer to that is no, it's not. We, we have these controls by ourselves. So, I, I just, I don't see where it's adding anything to the village control. I think it's adding something else that you can start to, to disagree on. And, uh, we, we have been told by the state, we have to treat all businesses equal. Whatever signage is allowed, uh, by our sign ordinance is what is allowed on all businesses. We can't treat the cannabis industry differently than we treat a gift shop, other than land use. It gave us time, place, and, uh, and density.
It makes the book thicker.
Maybe that's why we need it.
And I would like to hear Mr. Rhodes' opinion on that.
Real, real simple, very common to cross reference when you have something specific, you're, you're giving the signs. Those signs have to provide certain things, as well as the architectural control that you have. This basically gives anybody who looks at, at your cannabis control ordinance, the regulations you've chosen to do, they can't say, well, gee, I didn't know I needed to go do that. It basically is just, it may seem redundant, but it is actually just providing more information in about four or five lines, less than that when you get some code to make sure that they know what's required of them on signage.
So, where this says a single sign, but like on our other building, we get to have multiple signs? Are we treating them differently than we would another industry?
You have the regulatory authority to do that. I mean, if you wanna take, if you wanna limit two signs, or three, or six signs, or whatever, you could do that.
It, it, as long as there's a purpose for it, and not something that just got stuck in there by mistake or, or, uh, by omission. Then, my other question was on hours of operation. I think we had agreed, we were just gonna match the, uh, state alcohol package legislation. Instead of setting hard hours, if we set hard hours and the state changes their law, then, then we've gotta come back into this ordinance again. If we let it just float without all package sales, then it's like a living document, it can, it can keep up with whatever the legislation does. This is a new industry, it's gonna have some modifications.
Final page.
And, uh, and so, again, same question, if this is necessary, it's kinda like, alright. As soon as the state changes the law, we're gonna have to come back into this and rework it.
What is the time for package sales right now? Is it, is this the correct time?
I believe so. But, see, as soon as...
Yeah, that understanding, going.
It's floating with the legislature.
You have to put a reference in there to, I mean, on hours of operation, check with the state.
Well, or just match alcohol...
You have to change.
Match alcohol package... Well, or just match alcohol, match alcohol package sales as established by the state legislature.
There you go.
Okay, now that it's up to the state to decide what hours these businesses can be open. If, the only reason we would want to do it different is if we want to restrict the hours to hours. And we had that, we have that authority, but we didn't choose to do that. We said, well, whatever's working for a package of one product, we'd probably do it for a package of another product. And so it's, it's just how you make these things simpler and how they last longer. What do you think, Jeff? Is it, is it worth talking about or am I wrong?
I, I think this is, is more restrictive. I believe alcohol dealing is, is two, two in the morning.
Two AM and, and we, and we discussed that part two.
Not for package.
So if you, if you say standard, are you going to specifically not take the package?
Well, if you tie it to another regulation, you know, again, alcohol regulation, it's, they have their package hours are different than their per drink hours. And so we were, that's the most comparable industry. Is one reason that liquor permitting and regulation and everything else, they parallel pretty well. And so I was just looking at if we can simplify it, don't have to talk about this next year.
You're, you're covering both retail and package, if you will.
Correct.
And consumption of this.
Okay.
So as my understanding, I believe that it's, it's seven AM midnight for consumption. You just, you're just making it the same for both of them.
Under your cann-, under your cannabis heading.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's my two comments on it as written.
On my thoughts, this is just thoughts, is the signage. I don't know about the single sign because I don't know how the other signage rules are, but I like the reference to go to because it tells you where to go to look for signage. And I like that because I would be one that would just skip over it if it's not in there. But if it tells you, go to signage, find out what signage you are.
Well, but I mean, every, every one of our zones has signage again, so that's not a, you can't skip over. If you apply for application, it's doing anything.
That's not correct in residential zones. There, I mean, there, you have some zones where signage is limited. That's different. That's different than the signage.
But we've restricted cannabis from residential anyway, so.
Just an example of if you look at the scope and purpose of it, you see a reference in accordance with, you know, you're talking about state laws in the very first three eight one. That's very common. I mean, it's real.
Yes.
When, you know, when you're, when you're telling somebody you're regulating something or enacting something, if, if there are other specific provisions that apply to that, then, I mean, you know, that's the way you do it. You just incorporated my reference, so to speak.
So how do you feel, Jeff? Like if someone comes in and says, wait a minute, you're allowing me only one single sign in my cannabis establishment, but under your sign ordinance, I can have fifteen. So you're, you're signaling out cannabis and treating it differently than other businesses. Can we defend ourselves?
I don't know why not. You, you can, they give you the authority to regulate.
You can defend yourself on, on the fact that you, if you made the determination not to allow cannabis in the village.
But they also told us we could not, we couldn't treat cannabis industry differently.
You can exclude it, you can.
We cannot exclude cannabis industry from the village company. That's, that's by state statute. You have to say where and how, and so, so we can't say no. We can say no to consumption. That was the only one we could say no to. So the, the retail sale of cannabis is, is protected by the state statute. That's, that's verbatim. You, you cannot be restricted, take one and not allow. So it, so anyway, I just, if somebody comes and challenges it and they're going to challenge us on that you're treating me differently than you're treating the guy across the street.
Unless, unless it is something that, that the state specifically says you can't regulate, you can regulate.
Yep.
That's, that's, that's the way cannabis ordinance was.
And these will, it won't be us that gets tested. I don't think so much as it will be other cities. But that's where these ordinances are going to be back and forth the next few years because it's a brand new.
We have the option to change. If it becomes a problem, then change it.
If the state, if it's ruled against us, it'll just become something we can't afford.
Okay, as a group, what do we think? Do we want the single sign or we want to waive that part?
I'd say we do.
John, your thoughts? Bruce, what's your thoughts?
Well, I kind of agree with Jeff. We want to make sure that under the bad line of state, if you don't, that you don't have any gifters. Uh, one other observation is under our observation, uh, the end of the first sentence where it says marijuana, marijuana in cannabis, I thought we weren't allowed to use that word because it's plain word.
I think you are correct.
So.
Hours of operation, I need to change to cannabis, right?
Well, then you become cannabis products and cannabis, and cannabis establishments. So you're going to have to change completely every, I mean, give me some verbiage on that because I didn't note that that was the one marijuana that was left.
We, yeah, we, we have.
But, I mean, look, look at your sentence, the consumption, and consumption of cannabis, cannabis products, and marijuana in cannabis establishments.
Okay, so it differentiates.
The law regulates cannabis. It doesn't regulate marijuana.
Okay, you know, we're going to take a moment on this. I just, you know, with that light, you know, rather than go back.
Ken, if we struck, Jeff, let me ask you, if we struck some of this language, we could still vote on it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You, you better be real specific in the motion. That's what you're going to do. Yeah, I mean, signage is treated differently in the cannabis controller. It has to be attached to the building. You can't prohibit it if it's attached to the building, so. But you can limit it otherwise.
So it says no free standing?
That, that's exactly, exactly the way I interpreted it when I was reading some of the stuff that was put out.
Again, our, our goal in this was to create a village ordinance that, that was compliant with the act passed on by the state and then to go ahead and get our, our village ready for this new activity. So maybe arguing about signage or hours is way down the list on that we've done our job. The, the word marijuana, I think anyone, that doesn't add any restriction. It's not, it's not part of the regulation that state has. So it's, it's just, you can put in any word you want to. It doesn't matter. Cannabis is all been regulated.
Okay.
Okay.
So you think we're good? How we are. Everybody? I'll stand a motion to, motion would be to instruct, for me to instruct Jeff to publish by title and subject matter. Would that be correct?
I thought we, did we already do that?
We published it.
Oh, we did. So we can adopt it tonight?
Yeah, and I incorporated the notice of adoption by title and subject matter in this. It's in a topic, so that the codifier doesn't put it in.
If we want to clarify language, we can, without having to republish.
But we're going to have to rec, I mean, we're going to publish the adoption once you vote to adopt this. You published a proposed ordinance. So we published that proposed.
When it's adopted, it becomes the ordinance.
Proposed ordinance was published on September twenty fourth, actually nine twenty one. We got it in our, on, on September twenty fourth, fifteen days. Now we wait, now we adopt. Now we publish tomorrow the adoption of the proposed ordinance.
And then.
After it is published.
Five days later.
It's effective.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would rather adopt what we have written tonight and get on with this than to slow it down any further. I'll make a motion to.
Just go and read it.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance three ninety four, an ordinance regulating cannabis and cannabis establishments in accordance with the Cannabis Regulation Act, adopted a new title three, chapter eight by title and general subject matter.
Okay, have a motion on the table by trustee Maynor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion?
Is this a roll call?
This is a roll call vote. So trustee Teeman.
Aye.
Trustee Smaga.
Aye.
Trustee Maynor.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell.
Aye.
Aye for unanimous roll call vote. Will you publish that, Jeff? Ready to move on? Okay, the next is the recommendation to move Jessica Mallett, Mallett, the MBD clerk, to confirm full-time employment and remove from the six-month conditional employment. Have a motion by trustee Teeman to make Jessica Mallett a full-time employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion?
She's doing a great job. She really is. She's doing a fantastic job. Whenever she has an issue, it's normally something that we all have an issue with because it's something that very rarely comes up. She treats our customers great, with great respect, very friendly. But yet she can still be firm enough to calm them down.
We raised our fees to ten dollars on the service to help cover her expenses.
That covers the expenses and increase the time of day they're on for MBD.
Yeah, the, the increasing to a full-time employee covers her expenses. The extra five dollars is going to Rovin.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion action. Confirmation of conditional employment with the Village of Ploughkraft Police Department, Officer Kirk Felix, who is not here today. He's probably working.
He's still working for game and fish and he's on a call in Timberon right now, so. He's not ours to laugh or fight.
Where, where does he live, Kevin?
He lives at, at Tonfoks on the north side of the highway there.
So reasonable response time to the village.
Yes, yes. He's also got kids in school. He's younger, thirty-one? I don't think we're allowed to discuss that. But he's got young kids.
I met with him after the interviews. I really, really was impressed with him. And he's just a local doctor. I mean, he's been here for three or four years and raising his family. I think he's, he's here for all the reasons.
So we've got six months to a year for law enforcement? Is that your?
Yes, that's one of the recommendations in the handbook.
But if we, if we agree to conditional employment tonight, does he have six months or a year of conditional employment?
It would be a minimum six months probation. If we foresee any problem, we can always extend that to a year.
I see.
That's what we're wanting out of that. Because sometimes artists, not in his case, but if we hire a brand new rookie, then you want some time before you make that decision.
See how, how they're going to work out. You bet. Okay, I make a motion that we, we confirm conditional employment of those Ploughkraft Police Department Officer Kirk Felix.
Okay, have a motion to confirm Officer Kirk Felix. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one is the approval of updates to Village of Ploughkraft Employee Handbook. Everybody got a copy of that one?
And I just sent you the particular pages. If you need the whole handbook, I did print it out.
These are, these are all the proposed changes.
The ones that are in red are the proposed changes. We're taking the police department. It did say probationary period one year. Now we'd like to say we'll do for six months to one year. So that it gives the option to.
I think that gives the chief some discretion to do this. Sometimes you, if you make it too long, you might lose it.
Correct. On the second page, under vacation leave, the mayor would like to propose that we change it up to, employees will have the option to sell back up to twenty hours of vacation leave in excess of a hundred and sixty hours during the month of June and December. This allows us to review at year end and mid-year whether or not we have the availability of funds and that line is still in there. This option is subject to the availability of funds and budget constraints.
How much could we sell back in, in the, the old?
In the old one, it was up to the funds and the mayor's decision.
All, all the way up to the one.
All the way up.
So this would limit it to twenty?
This would, no, this would actually limit it to forty. But it would be splitting it twice a year, one, which in the old one, it was, the only time they could sell back was in December, which was kind of strange because our fiscal year ends in June. But I'm assuming they just transferred that over from somebody else whose fiscal year ended in January.
This, this doesn't really look intended because it's up to twenty hours, so it's capped.
Up to twenty hours in, in December and in June.
So you can say twenty hours each time. It says only twenty hours can be sold. If you have two months of the year, you can decide when you do that. So is that really the language you want?
So we can change it to say up to twenty hours respectively, June and December?
Or, or in the month of June and another twenty hours in the month of December?
The goal that I was, yeah, the goal I was having is, I didn't want everybody to sell back their vacation all at one time because that just annoys us.
And what we have is if we have everybody taking vacation all at the same time to bring their vacation down to a hundred and sixty. We have a lot of employees that gain almost an entire day or, or do get an entire day in the pay period.
And by doing it twice, I feel that, you know, you have a month, you've got a Christmas bonus if you want it with your vacation to sell back, plus it reminds you, you need to take some of this vacation.
I think you need to make a better language here with the sell back up to twenty hours is dependent. You can only sell back twenty hours.
Now, let's, uh.
You get to do it two different times a year.
That's correct because that was the intention, it's twice a year.
So if you want it up to twenty hours in the month of June and another twenty hours in the month of December, that would be your forty-hour cap perpetually kept.
Bruce, did you have something?
No, no.
Uh, Chief Summers. Chief Summers.
I do like the idea of the forty hours per year. We're hitting employees that, myself included, we wind up burning days for giving back. I do have a question about the twenty. Before, years ago, we had a minimum you had to keep and you could apply however much.
You have to keep the minimum.
Right, so we have.
This is, you can only sell back over.
So I knew it, well, it has to be over that one sixty.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I under, because I think employees need to have some of the books for when.
Yes, this is the, you've already hit your maximum. This is, this is use it or lose it vacation. We're looking, we're, let you sell back twenty in December, let you sell back twenty at the end of the year, and that way you're not hurt and you're not, not showing up for work for two months.
So that raises a question in my mind, fiscally, time-wise. If Sheila's knocking on Kevin's door saying, hey, it's the end of the fiscal year and you are sitting at one sixty-five, um, he might decide to go ahead and, he's not going to burn it, he's not going to take it, and he accrues him a little bit more. He's not one seventy and he comes in here in June or December and you don't buy it. He's not one seventy and he comes in here in June or December and you don't buy it back. He's gonna come to you and say, well, I was holding it because I was gonna sell it to you. So did we need to have some verbiage in there that says?
Use it or lose it?
Yes.
I mean, it does say.
I thought it said that.
This option is subject to the availability of funds and budget constraints, so they all, as long as they all are aware of it.
But it doesn't say what happens to the hours if you can't afford to buy them back.
Yeah, if it's gone, they're gonna go back to one sixty, so.
Maybe you need to tell the employees.
Barbara, could you put maybe June first to the employee or maybe even May?
That's what I was thinking, is maybe we do it in May versus June.
We do it in May, then it gives that employee time. If, if we can't pay it out, then that employee still has time to say, okay, well, I'll take.
Take her vacation.
I'll take three or four days off.
But you're gonna say though, any of the art used by the, by June thirtieth then?
Then you're, right.
Yeah, we can.
But I think that the decision whether you're gonna pay out or not needs to be made before June thirtieth.
It should be done the month before.
See what I mean?
And then, I, I think anytime if you're gonna, if they're gonna lose a benefit, just spell it out as clear as you can. You know, if you don't sell it back, you don't use it, then on this day, you just give them one. And, and then they, it, it's just fair to, whatever, good deals, bad deals, it doesn't matter, be, be straight up as you can be.
We can do it to May because the interim budgets are not due until May thirty-first, so by then we'll have talked through everything and we'll know whether or not the governing body is willing to buy back any hours.
And we should have an idea of how many hours.
We don't, we won't throw another strings on that budget until that time.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Well, I've got one more question, aren't we figuring that employees taking that vacation and paying it anyway? So what's our, what's our dilemma there of paying it out?
Because it's more money.
Because you're paying.
If you take it, I'm not paying you for not showing up for work.
You're, I'm paying you for being at work and taking a vacation day. So I'm gonna pay you.
If they, if they sell it to us, we've got to pay them their, their salary plus the vacation.
Right.
I, I, before we go, we've had a question on the first page, just under hours of work. We've, we've got quite a variety of hours of work in here depending on, on the department or on the job they do. That seems awfully confusing.
There's a lot of this handbook that's awfully confusing, so.
You know, can't we, can't we streamline this, when do people show up, when do they go home? And just, just make the regular day.
Yeah, then the police department messes all that up.
Well, you, you can treat your police department one way, but please, every, this has like four different. Now I've got five different times, four different times in this, you know, it's a small, it's a small business.
This is another, this is, the whole handbook at least it got me off of.
Okay, it does.
One of the things that just got me off, I had been collecting things that needed to be done, but one of the things that, that got it onto this agenda was the fact that we wanted to make sure that prior to that police officer coming on, he was underneath a current handbook that said it could be six months, it could be seven months, it could be eight months of probationary period.
The most questions I get from the general public, when does the office open? We say it opens at eight, they, they think everything that you do can be done at eight. To try and remember these four different timeframes for different services, to me, we're too small in town, we don't need to do that. Let's just pick your day, when, when do you want to work? Eight to five, seven to four, you're gonna have an hour for lunch or thirty minutes for lunch, what are we doing?
You're good.
But again, everybody's on the same.
Okay, but the problem there you're gonna have is like the MBD, it may not even say eight fifteen, but it's gotta be closed by four o'clock, it has to be, and you still have people that come in the door. So the office is open from eight to four-thirty. The MBD has to be shut down by four o'clock so that she can close her door, count it out, get it to the bank, because the state sweeps our account every morning.
This is an employee handbook, so she is an employee, when does she start and when does she go home? Or him, whoever does home. See, this, this, we understand the regulations the state gives, but this is an employee handbook, this is when your people show up and when they go home. What they're doing.
So you want a list of the departments or you want?
I think just pick a time, say, we, we open at eight and we close at five. If somebody comes in to do him the work and it's after four, you can't. It's like the bank teller, they close the lobby, but the bank teller stays till five to close out her books. So your MBD can close at four, but that employee stays there, but that employee doesn't get to leave at three-thirty. She's gotta stay, just like you said, she's gotta stay and close her books. So, so to me, if this is an employee handbook, it's employee hours, not services hours, you get that, I think it's.
Okay.
Yeah, I just simplified, every time we can't, I can't remember what we said.
I mean, it covers it with A, that it will be an eight-hour day. B is just the, kind of the hours that's in there. And you may be right, that may not even need to, need to be in there. But.
I can make that change.
You wanna just, we can add this on the next section of working on stuff. I don't know that we need to change it, you know, in a hurry.
No, I, I think it's better that you do anything you see, I mean, if you know there's other areas that need correcting, bring it to us. And it's better to rework these things and you're done for a few years.
I, I agree, I just have to find time.
We're continuing to work this.
But if we jump back and forth all through it, then it's never ending, you're never.
We did.
Barbara, you might want to look at the counties, they changed theirs, it doesn't say daily hours. It says they work an eighty-hour week, Sheriff's Department works an eighty-four-hour week. And they've done that because then part of their departments that are on the four-ten or five-eights or the S.O. on the twelve, it's covered in their handbook just by saying the hours.
Okay.
Per two-week pay period.
Okay, shall we move on?
Others, I'd like to change it to if a village employee is involved in an automobile accident while on duty or on call, such employee shall immediately notify supervisor, submit to testing for controlled substances of blood alcohol levels. This is for automobile accident. For work-related accidents, employees shall notify supervisor who will confer with the village clerk or the mayor, we can, and we can put that in there, to determine if deemed necessary for medical treatment and/or testing for controlled substances. In other words, I've had several conversations where this person had an accident, why were they not sent immediately to have their blood drawn for alcohol testing? It can, I, it can be a cut, it could be, I fell and I bruised my knee. There, I, I'd like to narrow this down so that we say not every single accident has to have. That way we're not discriminating against any employees and, and forcing others to go every single time, just because they happen to be driving vehicles.
What does your self-insured fund language say about accidents? Don't they, don't they have something?
It says an automobile accident.
Auto, and it'll, work-related, they don't get into, but are they doing our workman's comp?
Huh?
So, are we, is our workman's comp carried by the self-insured fund?
Yes.
Did we ever consider doing random testing?
We considered it and it's actually in here that we will, we never have. I budgeted for it like five hundred dollars this year, so we can, but we never have done it at this point.
Why?
I.
Why not? We have the right to, we just never.
We have the right to, I just, I have not done it, I apologize.
The industry I came from, it was automatic. Select, when you never knew who was gonna be selected, it was all random. And you might go one year and not be, or you might go six months and not be selected.
One, one thing to think about on job-related injuries, in, in the construction workman's comp, they'll, they'll tell us, like, a minor injury that gets infected can become a major problem. And so if someone, because they didn't go to the doctor because they just apparently cut their thumb, but.
That's why you have incident reports.
Yeah.
You still have to put in an accident report, this is not talking about an incident, this is talking about a full-on accident, okay? And I can make the decision if, if I fall over that transition and I have to cut myself and I just bruise myself, I still need to make an incident report with my supervisor so that it's on file, so that if I have a back injury six months later because of hitting my knee, it's been discussed with my supervisor.
We have reference of it.
Yes.
But you don't, but you don't have reference of.
We may not have drug.
You don't have drug or alcohol.
No.
Confirmation or not?
So then, then, then we need to, then we can go back to, we can X this out and, and say where we're going to test every single accident.
Well, and, and I don't know, because then, when we got so restrictive, then what we had is people concealed injuries.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it was such a big deal, they're like, man, I'm gonna be able to tell you.
I mean, I'd much rather have somebody come in and tell me, you know, this happened, but I feel okay and we're gonna keep an eye on it, and then I can check on that person. I mean, and I literally will set two or three days reminder, check on, judge on.
As long as our insurance guys agree with us. You know, that's, that's who rules working, you, you can't live without insurance.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Can we accept the changes on this employee handbook?
We can, I agree, but we do.
Have a motion on the table by trustee Teeman to accept the changes to the public policies and employee handbook, do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded by trustee Mitchell, any further discussion?
Are you gonna alter your twenty, your limit to the twenty hours?
Yes.
So add?
I have the same date thirty-first.
So the changes?
The, yes, it will be written with the intent of being able to sell twenty hours plus a year, up to twenty hours.
And the declarations, they don't do that, they lose them.
They will either use them or lose them. And we will let them know if we can buy them a month prior.
Are we gonna address these different hours of work?
I don't know that we want to right now, but, I mean, this is the constant, there's a lot of stuff in here we need to address. So that's something we probably want to look at. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are moving fast. Okay. Oh, one of my favorites. It is time to approve the Open Meetings Act with Governing Body Resolution number twenty twenty-one point twenty-two. I believe it hasn't changed at all. Uh, this is something we have to approve every year by state statute, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And it is our time of the year.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Okay, have a motion on the table to approve the Open Meetings Act, Governing Body Resolution number twenty twenty-one point twenty-two by trustee Maynard, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Teeman.
Aye.
Trustee Smaga.
Aye.
Trustee Maynard.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell.
Aye.
Aye for unanimous roll call vote. Okay, I just realized I've been calling you trustee for months.
We're all.
Okay, motion carries. Next one, the approval resolution of twenty twenty-one point twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-one point twenty-two, first quarter budget adjustments. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say I am so sorry that this is three pages long. A lot of it, of it is repetitive. If you increase a budget or change a budget line item, you have to also do the same with your expenditure. So we will go through, through this and, and I'll make sure, if you have any particular questions, you can ask me on it, but otherwise just, I'll just go through it and tell you. I tried to put a notation under each one. A lot of them are because of the fact that DFA changed their reporting system. We put the interim budget in that you approve as of May thirty-first, then you approve the final as of six-thirty. There is nothing that can be changed, so any decisions that are made, whether we've already made the decision on an amount, we just haven't quite figured out what fund we're gonna take it from, if it's made after May thirty-first, I cannot do anything with it until the end of the first quarter. It will not allow me to do it. Okay? So on this first one, this increase in budget revenues, I'm not asking for forty-five thousand dollars. We have consistently, from the day that I took over, been told by DFA that our RP five-hundred sales are, I'm sorry, this is the CRS sales tax, it needs to be pulled out because we had been putting it underneath our RP five-hundred with our GRTs, they're reporting it, and they've been saying, you're over-reporting, you're over-reporting, you're over-reporting every quarter. I have asked every quarter, I have driven to Santa Fe, we finally got an answer. They identified what we were over-reporting, it was being lumped in with GRT sales tax. And it's actually called CRS sales tax, and it needs to be in its own trust agency. So we have to establish that line item. What we did, and, and it should be a fairly good line item because we've gone an entire quarter and I took that times four, navigated out and gave you a budget. So I have to establish that budget, if it was going into the general fund or the water fund, now it's going to go into the trust fund. It's money we were still getting, it's not money that I'm asking to increase, I just have to be able to have it on this document to tell DFA we are now putting it into a trust agency. And they're gonna come back and they're gonna sweep it up, we're gonna have to pay them. So it's, those are the funds that go back to them.
To go to them and they send us back our portion, or do we get to keep our portion?
No, we don't get to keep our portion.
We don't?
No.
Okay, why is this only five percent when our, when our grocery receipts tax is seven point seven five?
Sales tax on water is five percent.
Set by the state?
Uh, no, yes, I believe so, correct me if I'm wrong, turn the roads. Do you know? Yeah. And even on the seven point, even the seven point two five, we only get one point eight six.
That's, that's why I didn't know if they were letting us keep the overage and we're sending them their share. But we don't do that in the other grocery receipts tax.
That's my assumption is that the five percent is, is the basic part that goes to them. You know, you, there's no sense in you moving the other three and a half percent from one fund to another.
But if we do that with grocery receipts tax, we send it all to them and they send us back our, our money?
And that's why they're pulling this out and saying, that's why they've been telling us we've been over-reporting and they're telling us you need to move this into a trust agency fund.
And what do we pay on the trust agency fund?
Nothing, because we're creating this trust agency fund specifically for this money.
Just to pay the state.
It's been in, it's been lumped in with the other sales tax, and that's why every quarter they've come back and said, you're over-reporting on your RP five-hundred that you're sending to taxation revenue. You're over-reporting, and I'm like, why, why? Tell me what it is that we're over-reporting. We finally identified that it was the CRS portion of the sales tax. And so we have to carve that out and put it into a trust agency fund per DFA. So I have to establish, establish a, a budget line item for it so that I can put that money in there. And if you look, you can, on your, on your R and E, which is in the very back, you'll now see a new fund. It's probably the very last one. Uh, well, it's not seven hundred, so it's third to the last, seven hundred trust and agency funds. The only thing that's going in there is that portion that they're saying that has to be carved out and not reported with your regular GRT. Now I need to establish a budget line item, I'm also going to have to establish the expenditure line item.
And, and do they call this truly a sales tax?
Yes.
Grocery seat tax.
It did grocery seat tax in New Mexico, didn't it?
Yes. They are telling us, we, we have to report it as CRS, DFA is telling me, we have to report it underneath four one two five oh CRS sales tax for water, sewage, and garbage. And it has to go into a trust agency, which is our seven hundred, you know, like our five hundred is our waters. So we're establishing that line item, it's not new money, it's money that's always been directed to the village, it's just. It's not new money, it's money that's always been directed to the village, it's just administrative paperwork, basically. Um, the next one is one hundred is your general fund, the ICB Interstate Telecom. This is a new, if you'll remember, we talked long and hard about taxation and revenue and how they were breaking everything out and redoing their entire reporting structure. This is another reporting structure that they've come up with that we have to now establish, we knew nothing about it until after first of the year. And we have to establish this, and they're coming in and they're saying, again, you're over reporting on your RP five hundred, that should be RP five hundred, sorry. Um, correction per the DFA. So we have to establish that budget and break that. It's money that's always been coming in, it's just been getting lumped into either the water fund or the general fund. And they're telling us this one can stay in the general fund. Okay? But the problem is, is it needs to be relabeled and reclassified underneath that different code when it goes to them. Same with the increase, um, on the seven hundred three two three four. Um, actually, if you'll take those two, the forty-five thousand and ninety-eight hundred, you're gonna come down to expenditures, second line item says fifty-four eight. That's expending out, giving me the ability to, now I have a line item budget and I can expend out from it. Okay? Um, this is a, this is a fun one, we actually get more money. Uh, increase on the two one eight in our governmental grants library. Lisa went out, um, and actually got a grant from Otero County for two thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars um, to purchase a three D printer. So, um, it was a surprise to me and to all of us. I now have to create that budget, that line item so I can report to DFA, I now have twenty-five hundred dollars. We went out, we purchased it, so I have to, I have to also create a line item for the expenditure so that I can expend the funds. Um, she's already purchased it and we have to recoup the money, uh, in October. So it will be just a total wash, they, they're just buying a very nice three D printer for us. The next one is, uh, increase in the one ten, the emergency reserve funds. We did not budget for anything to come out of the emergency reserves. Uh, but we had two lightning strikes, which created quite a bit of damage to the building. Man hours, equipment, grounding, repair work. Um, hopefully we'll recoup quite a bit of that from the insurance company. I have filed a claim, but haven't gotten anything back from them yet. Uh, so I need to establish a budget line item to be able to have an expenditure of the sixteen thousand. We've already paid the bills, we already expended out the money, and if you look at one ten in your R and E, you'll see where there's a negative. Underneath. You'll see that we had a budget of three hundred and fifty dollars. So I told DFA I'm only gonna spend three hundred and fifty dollars out of this fund for the whole year. Now I have to go back and I have to tell them, oops, I wound up spending sixteen thousand because we had an emergency. Uh, recreation fund, we received a donation, so I need to establish a line item. In order, we've got the revenue again, just because of the reporting with DFA, I need to establish the line item of a hundred dollars to receive it. Uh, there's an increase in the ambulance fund, they, um, also received a refund. Uh, so I need to establish that line item. Um, so it's not an increase in me asking for money, okay? None of those are asking for money, except for the reserves, and that's where we have to pay for the lightning strike. Increase in budget expenditures, um, I am really sorry, this was mine, I'm, I'm asking for an increase of seventy-five cents. They give us a certain amount to say this is how much you have to pay for your principal and your interest. And they were off by seventy-five cents, or I was off by seventy-five cents. Um, so I have to increase that by seventy-five cents. These seven hundred, I explained was the forty-five and the ninety-eight hundred combined. So there's your revenue, there's your expenditure to be able to spend it out. The one one oh four seven oh three from the emergency reserves, that's the expenditure to be able to expend it out. The increase in the two one eight four nine oh one is the expenditure to pay out the intergovernmental grant for the library. Uh, lodger's tax fund, I need to increase that by a thousand. I have, um, out of the two one four, which is actual lodger's tax, I had anticipated expenditures of ten thousand sixty. Um, Jenny was able to go out and buy, uh, picnic tables and some other stuff for Zenith Park. Uh, some doggy dog stations and some fencing. Um, she spent a little bit more than I anticipated, and so I need to increase that. It's not anything that wasn't already in lodger's tax to be able to expand, and we have to expend lodger's tax within two years. Um, so I'm just increasing that line item so DFA doesn't see a deficit. The two one five four six two eight lodger's promo, I'm increasing that by, um, by three thousand from zero to three thousand. Uh, just to balance out the, the budget, the budgeted amount and the expenditures for, and this was totally my fault. Um, I think I had it at eighty-seven thousand, and yet I allowed ninety. And so if I, if I'm setting a revenue, what I'm, what I'm trying to get here is, if I set a revenue of ninety thousand dollars, I don't wanna expend more than that ninety thousand dollars. Um, so in this case, I said I'm gonna spend less. I need to increase that budget expenditure to allow me to expend up to ninety thousand because I have to spend that much out of lodger's tax. Promotional. Um, the recreation fund for Zenith Park, again, totally my fault. There was some expenditures that went, it was like eighteen dollars that got expended for some weed whacker wire. Um, so I'm putting a hundred dollars in there. Uh, I hadn't anticipated, we talked, we discussed this, I didn't anticipate doing any Zenith Park uh, improvements, simply because we had an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant that I thought was gonna take care of everything, but we need to establish being able to muddle along. Uh, the next one is on the second page, Capital Projects, three thirty, forty-five, twenty-six. This is the, the grant that we were given for the acquisition of the forest. The revenue line item is set at a hundred and thirty thousand, they're giving us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I only set the expenditure at a hundred and twenty-five, I need to increase that to a hundred and thirty. You following trustee Maynard?
I have, no, I have lost you.
You totally lost me, okay, I'm on page two at the very top. And it says three three oh four five two six, Capital Projects.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna increase that expenditure by five thousand, okay? Um, on two nine nine four six oh seven, the ambulance fund, I need to increase that insurance general property by fifty-two sixty-two from zero. For whatever reason, my fault again, it didn't get entered into the system, into DFA's system.
And that's what we pulled out of the salary.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. Uh, so I'm not asking for any more money or anything like that. Um, three three five four nine two five Recreation Improvement Fund. This is the cash match that we're saying is gonna come from the general fund. So I'm gonna move it from the general fund, this is the increase in the expenditure. And you'll see the transfer a little bit later on. Um, five oh three four seven three two sanitation environment. Uh, again, this is one of those that normally you have absolutely no money that comes into it. Five dollars is sitting in there. Somebody spent forty-five dollars, so we've gotta bring it up to that. Uh, five oh five utility water sewer, uh, this is the STANTE, Engineering and Other Inspections. So this is the PER for the mountaintop water lead blue line sewer project that's gonna go out to USDA. But a year or two ago, we, you made the determining factor that twenty-five thousand would be spent out of infrastructure, twenty-five thousand would be sent, spent out of water, and twenty-five would be spent, twenty-five thousand would be spent out of, um, water sewer replacement. All of it had been expended to STANTE with the exception of this twenty-five thousand dollars. So we need to budget that in there. Two one six four eight four five, this is the cash match for squirrel, the seventy-three seven fifty. Um, we need to establish that budget, we've already established the fact that we hopefully won't have to, we'll hear and they'll waive it, and maybe it'll only be twenty-five thousand, but, um, I have to establish that budget line item. Um, five oh five four three two three water sewer, equipment and machinery, again, it was on and approved by underneath your, um, we went through the budget review, ten thousand dollars for machinery for water and sewer. Um, it just didn't get put into the DFA system. The only way to get it into DFA's system is for me to have you sign off on it again.
So we're getting not new money, but money we already have.
It's not new money, it's money that you guys saw when we went through the budget retreats and the final budget. It just, when we went through the budget retreat, we may have made five decisions after we came out of that budget retreat and I entered the information into DFA's site. Then we made three or four more decisions and said, okay, here's three, three or four more line items. I can't get back in there to change it, it will not allow it to.
After that made three or four?
Yes, they have restricted it completely.
Three more, definitely.
Yeah.
So attention.
A lot, a lot more oversight, and it's like every, every quarter, there's a little something that you can't tweak. Increase in the two ninety nine ambulance fund. I've, uh, totally forgot that Eric has an emergency line service that we have to pay for, five dollars a month so that they can be in communication if they're out, out of range. Um, so I need to establish that line item. Decrease budget expenditures, and, and Eric, that one's your fault, I'm not taking the blame for it. He made me, he made me break out a lot of lines for him. Decrease in the budget expenditures. Um, so this is ambulance, this is where I'm taking the money from the full-time salary to pay the interest.
And, and on, on that, have we just not had anyone show an interest in it? I mean, are we having?
We haven't put it out yet. I was, actually, I've been trying to set up a meeting with Robert Bucky for about a month and a half. Of course, my COVID's did kind of ruin that. But, our, we just couldn't get our timing. And just with his experience and knowledge, I just wanted him to help write that description. I think we're just gonna have to go ahead and, and sit down and do it, and with him or without him. But go ahead and move on that one. Especially with, you know, that good question that came up to you the other night about the taxpayers and the lack of any, so it was, we need to do something.
And then, and then, but we did better.
We did.
And then it's like, okay.
No, that was, a lot of it was trying to figure out the details.
December, we're six months in.
Three months or three months?
December, we're six months in. It'll be here before you know it.
So the next two are decrease in budget expenditures in two nine seven, the EMS fund. I'm decreasing these two line items. If you look, uh, um, basically, you guess whenever you put in, um, that budget amount because it's based on a grant. Uh, you're guessing on all of them, you're, you're, you're doing a calculated guess, I guess I should say, calculated estimate. Um, our grants were usually right around eighty-three hundred, that's when I set that budget out. Uh, the grant came in for the EMS fund at seventy-two sixty-one. So when I set the budget at eighty-three hundred, I set the expenditures at eighty-three hundred. Not that I don't trust Eric to stick to seventy-two sixty-one, but I think that I need to drop those line items to keep Sheila and I from believing that there's extra money in there, that there's not. My current expenditures say that there's eighty-three hundred dollars in our accounting system. I need to be able to make our accounting system and DFA's accounting system say seventy-two sixty-one. So that's why I'm reducing those line items. Can't expend more than what Eric has. Um, two nine four four eight four five infrastructure, this is the cash match for squirrel. Um, the expenditure portion of it. So again, you have to have a revenue line item, you have to have an expenditure line item. And we will see the revenue line item as a transfer coming from infrastructure into Muni Streets, it'll go out and in, it'll go to Muni Streets. So that we'll see all of those street road projects up underneath municipal streets. Next one's five oh six water sewer replacement fund, engineering inspection. Um, I am decreasing, this is right down the middle, uh, by twelve thousand, twelve thousand six oh one four forty-eight. That was money that was expended to STANTE after we did our estimation for the budget. Um, then STANTE came in on the PER and billed us. So we've already expended those funds in last fiscal year. I can body stated, take seventy-five thousand dollars, move it to the road, street maintenance program.
Did you skip, skip one there, was it the ten thousand two thirty-seven? Or did I miss?
No, you, no, you missed it.
Okay. Excuse me.
Did you, yeah, okay. Um, so, uh, same thing, again, it's APAR, um, it's accounts payable, accounts receivable. Um, this transfer, we are taking this seventy-five thousand dollars completely out of general fund and going to be moving it to municipal streets. That is not a cash match, that is money that, uh, you said, take a hundred thousand dollars out of general fund. Seventy-five thousand needs to go into municipal streets to start establishing a maintenance program. Um, so that Public Works would have money to, um, grade and, and, and buy their vehicles and, and asphalt and things like that with their maintenance plan.
Can I ask Jubal a question?
Uh-huh.
Do, do we have Jubal, or are you developing a schedule on maintenance identified by street?
I've got, I gave Barbara a list a while back. And it's, it's not prioritized yet, but it's what we worked on back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Kind of an assessment of what the values of the streets were, what it's gonna cost.
Reason I bring that up, when, when we go and try and sell an increase in, in the water rates that we're proposing, if we have a plan on, if, if we are able to develop this income stream for road maintenance, here's what we're gonna do with the money. And, and that's priority street number one and so on would be a
Or a rotation schedule is kind of
Well, you've got some streets that need work on every day, you've got some other streets, maybe once a year.
Once a year, yeah.
They're all different, so.
Yeah, my biggest thing I'm looking at right now is trying to get the streets we have now and give them repin, you know, give another top layer on them. But I can get the list of priority ones and that.
I think it's gonna come up as we try to sell that. It's like, okay, where's your street plan? And, and I'd just say, here it is.
Because part of, part of the utility bill, and, and I'd like people to remember that it's not a water bill, it's a utility bill, it has water, sewer, and garbage on it. Um, part of that will be directed to road maintenance. Um, so we need to be able to
That's why we talk about that on the dedication of those different incomes.
Exactly.
That, that plus a road plan will help us sell it to more people, so.
I mean, it's not prioritized yet, but it's in front, I'm
Well, well, we have something we can say where, agree where we are.
So that, that, you will see the, the out from general fund to Muni Streets, and then you'll see the in to Muni Streets from general fund. Um, the next one is the emergency reserves, out to Muni Streets for fifty thousand dollars, in to Muni Streets for fifty thousand. Out to Muni Streets for $50,000, in to Muni Streets for $50,000 from the emergency reserve fund. You asked that I take $50,000 from the emergency reserves to have that road maintenance built up to 125,000 basically. Then we have a transfer from the emergency reserves, 110, to Muni Streets of $10,000, and then to Muni Streets from emergency reserve. It's just the two being transferred. So in other words, I'm taking out of emergency reserves, I'm taking $10,000 and putting it into Muni Streets. I am doing that based on the fact that we've increased, okay, so we have an ordinance that says we have to have a corrections fund. Every year, that corrections fund is, is basically for the police department if we were to house prisoners, feeding them, transporting them, all of that. Every year, it is written in an ordinance that states that money will either be utilized out of corrections for the care of prisoners or it will be transferred to the general fund. And it's by ordinance that states it will be transferred to the general fund. So I've got to transfer it to the general fund, but I don't want it just sitting in the general fund when I can utilize that money to help our roads maintenance. So we're going to transfer to the general fund the $10,000, and then we're going to go, and emergency reserves and general fund are the same thing to DFA. They're different to us, but to DFA, they are the exact same thing.
Why don't we do 50 and 10 instead of 10?
They're the exact same thing to DFA, but not to us. It's very hard to be transparent, I'm sorry. So that $10,000, that corrections, Ginny used to transfer, yeah, Ginny used to transfer $7,000 all the time, $7,000 every year. Well, it's built up over some time. So there's money in there that I've already transferred, you've already authorized. Now I know what I have in there, and you can look at your recap, and you can tell underneath your emergency reserves that you have, or underneath your corrections, I'm sorry, that you have $12,000, okay? At the beginning of the year, and we set up a transfer of $10,000. So we'll still have funds in there if we do happen to have a prisoner that we can take care of them. But otherwise, instead of transferring it, it's going to go to the general fund, and then I'm going to bounce it right back to street maintenance.
We're the only town in America that ever arrested anybody.
And the only, and the only reason why I didn't, and you can tell me a quick way, attorney, to fix that. The only reason why I didn't go directly from corrections to Muni Streets is because the ordinance said that.
She's not saying that right. No, it makes you sure.
Yeah, yeah. Third page. General Fund to Recreational Improvement Fund, there's your $80,000 transfer, okay? So it's coming out of general fund, it's going into recreational improvement. And then earlier, we established the budget line item, which is why you see the $80,000 so many times. We have to establish the budget line item, and we have to establish the expenditure line item too. In from 295 Infrastructure to Muni Streets is the 73750. Again, that's that cash match. We established the cash match earlier. We established the expenditure earlier. Now we have to establish the fact that I've got to get that money out of infrastructure to Muni Streets so that we can pay it out of Muni Streets. Transfer in from the water sewer to the trust agency. We're going to transfer 2,000. Again, it was another, this is another one of those. It had no line item established for it in DFA because it's the 700, so I have to establish that transfer in and out.
Let me ask you a question. Where the guys did the work on the water line over here, is that squirrel right in front of the high school?
Plolo.
Plolo. How did we show that as part of that project?
So what I did was I talked to Mayor Protim the other day, and he has very kindly determined that he will help me with this American Rescue Plan, that we got that $176,000 from federally that we can expend on water, sewer, or broadband. And we had initially talked about utilizing it for the cash match of 73750. After he reviewed it a little, and I reviewed it a little further, and after having seen some of the projects that he has that he needs to do, manhole covers and all these other things, we can expend those funds on that. So we went back and we took the $9,000, I think, $9,000, almost $10,000 that we expended sewer line wise and coded it out of that FRF fund.
That's good, because that's part of, again, our street and water improvement.
It can't be, it can't be street related. It has to be sewer or water, okay? That's all it can be, or broadband. So if we want to get internet for everybody, we could do that. We can only.
I assume water come before broadband.
We'll only get $88,000 this year, but then we'll get the other 88 next year as of July 1st. So we've kind of, Mayor Protim and I decided that that would be the best thing to be able, when they have these projects, like prepping Squirrel for when we start that project, there's going to be sewer line and manhole covers and everything. He's going to spend money rather than taking that out of the water fund. We're going to take it out of that until we.
And those manhole covers work in the contractor's bid for the street itself?
No, this is for the other side of the wall. This is up by a family dollar. From A to South to Timbuk there, and possibly up to Squirrel.
We need, we need to.
That may be a question for Ginny.
Sorry to interrupt you. When we do those bids on the street project, if there's something not going to be done by the contractor, we need to identify that because it's additional liability for the village. If there's $10,000 worth of Vincent, dental work that's going to be done, that come from somewhere, so.
And I'll check with Ginny and see, that's money that we had to, I don't know that you've signed off on that one yet. Squirrel?
No.
Yeah, so she can check in and see whether or not that's coming under there.
It's like curves, are curves in there or not? Are we doing curves?
Right.
And because it slips through, it's complicated.
Yeah, yeah. An increase and transfer from fund to fund. This is the last section, I'm sorry. 209 Fire Protection. Again, they took out a dollar more than what I anticipated to pay back your loan, so I have to increase it by a dollar.
These kind of, I wonder what shape this is.
And then in the water sewer replacement, this is to pay back a loan. I, I missed it by $3.53, so I've got to do that transfer off.
All right, any questions on the budget transfer? Budget adjustments? Anybody want to give me a motion?
Are we sure we want to do them all? I mean, everybody's good with everything that's there. If it's wanted to put in, it's put in.
Ooh, no different.
I would move the adopt resolution number 2021.23 as written.
Have a motion on the table by trustee Mitchell to adopt, or to approve resolution number 2021.23 as written, the first quarter budget adjustments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by trustee Maynard. Any further discussion?
We will understand this next budget cycle.
I'm going to beat this into you until you get it.
Okay, is the resolution, is a roll call, I believe, so. Trustee Teeman?
Aye.
Trustee Smaga? Trustee Maynard?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell?
Aye.
Aye for unanimous roll call vote.
I pray we don't have to have an emergency area special meeting. I calmed through this bad boy as much as I could.
I'll go to number 10, statement of revenues and expenditures. I'm going to turn the table over to you, George. You, you can have number 10.
You can get number 10.
Okay, I would acknowledge the September 2021 expenditures as submitted.
Is that a motion?
I would move.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to the, for the acknowledgement of the expenditures as presented. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mayor Protim.
Teeman.
Teeman, one of them.
One of them.
By Mayor Protim, T. Trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second from trustee Teeman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.